Yes, uh, next week.
Hey, J6, how are you? Good, you? Huh? Yeah, Emily's in Mexico. I dropped her off this morning.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah, I was gonna go on that trip, but I have too much going on.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, hi.
Alright.
Go ahead.
How are you?
Um.
You good? And you?
I forget. That's a very important thing.
My, uh, that was my dad's jacket.
No, no, I know. I approached the subject.
We really used to wear like a lot of suits and now.
I am. Good?
If it wasn't that you told me about. That I was telling you about.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
If you had told me that, I would have.
I see.
It's got like a mesh.
Yeah.
I have to buy a tuxedo. I think the next time I'm gonna get it.
Yeah. That's a good one to have in our personal. I have one.
Yeah, Macy's has a sale. My father was gonna give me one for those old tuxedos with the double breasted. And he said, no.
Yeah, when Ostenberg was closing, I went to buy a couple of suits and I left. I, he had a tuxedo for like four hundred bucks and I'm like, I know I'm gonna use this, you know, like, but, uh, I ended up taking it.
Huh? Are you going to the galleys?
Yeah.
Alright, so, yeah.
Hello, how are you, Erica? Good.
And then the league is, the police galleys on a Friday.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the league is.
Well, tomorrow we do the, where are you? Are you the vice chair, how long we're working for, uh, the league is.
Oh, no, no, I didn't get that.
Uh, yeah, 'cause I'm the guy that, uh, but I, I know there's two people, no?
No one told me. Should ask, um, I'll ask Erica.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's how it works.
I think there's two.
They today, huh?
Yeah. Oh, it's okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's even.
Oh, fine. Who beat the football team? Including the Scarlett Johansson. No, it's okay. No, I keep track of, I keep mental to. Oh, shit.
Okay, we will call this meeting to order at seven oh five. Okay, welcome everyone. So, uh, the councilman Lamis is not here. All will be doing the invocation, uh, in his place, so please stand. We pray for the agenda set forth before us this evening and ask that we be granted the ability to work together in harmony where then, when there is honest disagreement and dissent. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak and the patience to listen receptively and empathically when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues that we encounter and a keen sense of the welfare needs of our residents. May we be reminded that we're not only leaders but also servants and that it's our responsibility to serve the common good of all the residents of Miami Springs. Amen. And now please remain standing and. It must be on the right hand side of the speaker. Just move. Okay, join us within the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, I'm not saying. I have like ceiling insulation away from my seat. Okay. Alrighty, so once again, thank you everyone for being here. We're super excited about some of the guests and, uh, the people we're gonna be recognizing today, but we will begin with the, uh, item three, Agenda Order of Business. Is there anybody that wants to move an item? And is there anybody who wants to pull an item from the consent agenda? No? I'd like to entertain a motion to set the agenda.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
There's still an item on your agenda. It's item eight A. Um, as we shared with you, um, this had been noticed for this evening, but it is being deferred not to a date certain. Um, the site plan for thirty Canal Street will come back to the city council, uh, when it's ready. Uh, we just had, we just concluded a hearing of the Board of Adjustment, so it will come back to the city council when it's ready. Along with the corresponding development agreement, so that will not be heard tonight, so we'd request to defer that item.
Thank you. Okay, so with item eight A, the public hearing being deferred, I'd like to entertain a motion to set the agenda in order of business.
Um, I'll set a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll do a voice vote. All in favor of setting the agenda say aye.
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 All, all those, uh, against say no. Okay, so the, remove, so moving on to awards and presentation, so we are going to begin with recognizing, recognizing our Miami Springs Senior High School baseball team. How about a big round of applause for the baseball team? You, you need to have been living under a rock if you did not hear that last week, uh, the boys were, uh, became three A state champions and we've got the team here. We've got the coach and we've got, uh, the principal, so I'd like to call up, uh, First Principal Nelson Gonzalez and also please come up the coach, say, say a few words. Tell us about, uh, this wonderful achievement and then we're gonna recognize, uh, the young men, the athletes. Big hand for you guys.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I wanna say thank you for this opportunity. I'll be remiss not to acknowledge, uh, the support from the city and what you guys have done, uh, to recognize our students, especially with the drive back into Miami Springs. I can speak from my perspective that they really enjoyed it and I think it's an experience that they're not gonna forget for the rest of their lifetime. One of the things that I witnessed firsthand was all of them very excited on that bus and taking videos and they felt like they were stars. And what I'm hearing the chatter from the team is this is what it feels like to win a championship in the, uh, the big show, so in the major league, so they're very excited for that. Second, I will be remiss if I don't recognize the coaches. Without their leadership, their hard work and their dedication, none of this would have been possible. They have sacrificed their own time, their family time, to give to our school, to give to the community and to give to our kids. Without that, this miracle would not have happened. And lastly, I gotta recognize the parents, 'cause the parents were here from day one, the inception of their birth, and participating and taking these kids to the practices at all times, sacrificing family time, work time, giving up money, all that, to give these kids this opportunity to be in this position, to succeed and to continue their career later on, hopefully at the next level at college and for sure to continue studying and pushing forward. With that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to the phenomenal coach, Mister Fanchal.
Well, thank you very much for having us today. Um, it's great for these boys to be honored the way that they should be. Uh, they've, uh, accomplished a remarkable achievement, not only personally, personally, but as a team. Um, they, first team in, uh, school history to accomplish a state championship in the sport of baseball. Uh, I'm just happy that the Springs community has come together to be able to celebrate them the, the way that they should be, especially for most of our seniors, that this is their last, uh, their last couple of weeks in school. Uh, this is something that they're gonna remember for the rest of their lives and, um, again, I'm appreciative that the Springs community can make that to life, uh, with a parade and the escorts and stuff like that, so again, thank you very much.
Alright, before we move on, did you guys want to say anything? So there was an event today at the school and we were happy to attend, but some of us did not, but, uh, do you guys wanna just chime in before we go out there and recognize the, uh, players?
For sure. Um, just wanna say, uh.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
It's all good, bud.
Sorry. Uh, just wanna say, uh, congratulations. Uh, this is a prime example of what hard work does. So just use this for the rest of your life and you'll be successful. You know, you work hard, you do it in a team and you listen to the people that have the experience and you just keep on pushing. I have a statement from, uh, our great friend, uh, Mikey Gavila, and, uh, he wanted me to say that, uh, one second, let me just put it here, that he's very sorry for not being here. Um, he's very proud of you guys and he will always support the baseball team. And he wants you guys to know that once a Hawk, always a Hawk.
Alright. Mikey.
To the chair, um, once again, congratulations. Obviously, uh, you know how proud this community is. You've already seen a little bit of, uh, uh, of what is stored for you guys, especially coming up with the parade, uh, so we're definitely proud. That's an understatement. And I think you guys have heard it enough today and, uh, from others and coaches, definitely you can't take this day for granted, uh, this, what you, what you guys achieved. There's a lot of teams out there, many teams that are actually prepared for this very thing and they can never make it. So there's something special when a team gets to win a championship. Uh, so definitely don't take it for granted, enjoy every moment of it, 'cause it really is special. And don't be surprised. I hope to get back to back and maybe even a three-peat, but the reality is you'll look back and you'll probably go, wow, you know, it takes time and it's not easy. So even, even if there's teams out there that might be super talented, it takes a special group of guys and led by a special coach and the support of the parents to get to this point, so congratulations.
I wanna say that all of us on council went to see a couple of the games when you guys were playing here in Springs, but I have one question. Now, there is one super fan, the guy who was by the dugout who yelled, "Gozolina!" But, who is that guy? Did he go see you when you guys went out of the, out of the city? That's your uncle?
Yeah.
Okay, nice, nice. He's a super fan. That guy really supports you guys. Alright, that was my question. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you. And you guys, so you guys know how Bill Daley gets and that's because he's been around a long time. So it was fun being, being on, uh, being on the stage today and Commissioner Manny Diaz Jr., who was class of nineteen ninety, and Spencer and I, the mayor of VG, we're sitting on the stage. We were class of ninety-one. And we got somebody here who said you were class of seventy-seven, you said? Alright, well, I know some people that were class of sixty-seven. We got, we got people that have been in this town for a long time. And this, uh, this, this community and, and, uh, and Miami Springs Senior High have produced some great athletes and some great teams and no one's ever won a championship like this, so you are to be commended. You did something historic and so Sunday we're gonna really celebrate, so we're happy. Alright, so here's what we're gonna do. Council, you wanna go down there? So, Erica, can you move that out of the way? Alright, so when we call your name, we have, we have a certificate that we're gonna give to each player and then we're gonna take pictures of here. So let's start off with Andres Suarez. Come on up.
You gotta go through the handshake line, buddy.
Number one.
Next up, Spencer Hilton. Roydon Perez. Michael Mikez. Damian V. Abril. Austin Argote. Kaiser Alvarez.
Kaiser's not here.
You're missing Kaiser. We're missing Taylor.
When they go up, and then we'll give them to you.
Christopher Maderos. Magdiles Tevez. Josiah Acosta. Darian Soto. Congratulations. Oscar Hernandez. Jordani Gonzalez. Well, we're gonna take pictures as a group now in a second.
Congratulations. What's your name?
Alright, Frank Enriquez. Adrian Enriquez. Alright. Jordan Torres. Kevin Roque. Taylor Ancheta. And Kelvin Pereira.
Congrats.
Edwin Barrientos. Shay Ancheta. Justin Mercado. And Anthony Espinoza.
Is that everybody?
Justin.
No.
We have to be close, isn't it?
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, got you.
Alright, so we also wanna recognize Robert De La Fe, statistician. Sorry, did they go by? Where's the last place to look? Alright, here, I'll make it easier for you. Who do you got next there? We'll leave the head coach for last. As a head coach, we'll leave him for last. Alright, George Dominguez, assistant coach. Come on up. Next, Corey Estrada, assistant coach. Jesus Hernandez, assistant coach. And let's call up Principal Nelson Gonzalez. And last but not least, give it up for your head coach, David Fanchal. Come on up, bring the whole team up here.
One more for the city. Hey. We don't need to teach baseball players how to take a knee. How about some people take a knee? Alright, and then how about the people in the second row step down and then that way the people in the top row, now we look like a team. There we go.
Give it up for your three A state champion, Golden Hawks baseball team. While we're up here, next on the agenda is Yard of the Month and we would like to recognize Joseph and Emily Soto Leal. If you are here, come on up. They live at two thirty-one Lenape Drive.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Congrats.
Alright, so let me guess, one of you is the idea person and the other one is the make it happen person. Is that how it works? That's how, always how it works. Alright, thank you, guys. Alright, back to live action. Okay. Alright, so moving on from awards and presentations, we go to open forum. Nobody signed up for open forums, so we will continue to six. We have approval of council minutes for May eighth council workshop and May twelfth regular council meeting. Like to entertain a motion to approve the council minutes.
Uh, motion to approve.
Alright, we have a first and a second. So, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Dion.
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Yes.
Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, we move on to seven reports from the boards and commissions and there are none. Our, uh, eight public hearing was deferred. We move on to the consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I, I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. We'll do a voice vote, so all in favor of approving items nine A through C from the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Uh, all those opposed, please say no. Alright, so that motion carries. Move on, no old business. We have new business requests by Mayor Fahad to discuss designation of a city historian, so, um, it came to my attention that, uh, several cities have, uh, historians, like some call it an official city historian, some call it just a city historian. Uh, uh, that, that I could, uh, find out about that said official Miami Beach, uh, I believe also Sunny Isles and Opalaka had official. The other ones have, uh, just say, uh, you know, there's, uh, I think Pembroke Pines, Miami Lakes, uh, there were a couple of other cities that have city historians. So, um, we actually, uh, happen to have a person, I think it's really important as we go into the centennial, that we recognize, uh, have a, a position like this so that we could recognize the people that really go above and beyond to preserve our, our history. Um, so I wanted to bring as a request to the council that we, uh, have staff work on establishing a, uh, city historian. And, uh, it probably comes as no surprise to everybody that I'm going to recommend that that person, uh, once that is established, be, uh, Ken Wild, uh, who has basically been acting as our city historian for over two decades, uh, already. Um, so, uh, I opened that up for discussion.
Well, when I, uh, Mayor, when I heard the name on the meeting the other day, I heard, uh, who is the person that the mayor's considering? And they said, Ken Wild. I was like, him? Why is it always him? And there was dead silence and on the phone, guys, I'm only kidding. I love Ken. He's like Mister Ma, he's a real Mister Miami Springs. What are his duties, Mister Mayor? What would his duties be?
So we're going to, I mean, outside of what he already does, he's the go-to person for everything historical from us. I mean, you know, we, I, I call him whenever we, we wanna find out, uh, you know, what, you know, where things came from and what happened. Um, but I think that, uh, just having somebody that could have that, uh, title going into the centennial, I think, uh, would mean a lot to him for what he's contributed to, uh, the city and continues to contribute. As a matter of fact, he, he sent, uh, sent me a link to a, to a, of, something that he posted on Facebook, like, uh, long, long, like, many, many years ago, uh, that he posted online of him doing some historical, you know, was a video about the history of Miami Springs. He's been doing it for many years. Uh, I know that he's working, uh, he's working on some, uh, I, I believe a book about the city, history of Miami Springs, but he is somebody who is very involved in the Miami Springs Historical Society and Museum, as you know. He's also very involved in the Curtis Mansion, uh, and he, you know, has served as our de facto historian and I think that he should be recognized for it and we should establish that, uh, that title, uh, you know, so. But again, I opened it up for discussion. What do you guys think?
Um, they're not gonna get any argument from me, that's for sure. I've been working with Ken for the last couple of years for the centennial, the go-to guy. Uh, couldn't ask for a better person to represent us as a historian to this town, so, uh, like I said, no argument at all, actually the opposite. I would argue if you had anybody else.
Right.
Fine, but, uh, Ken is definitely the perfect person for it. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I agree with George and, um, I think, uh, he's a great guy. He has a lot of knowledge in history, is involved in the Historical Society. Um, he loves the city. You won't have any, uh, pushback from me on that either, uh, definitely on board. I actually would have thought he would, would have already been the city historian. Um, but yeah, I think it's definitely a no-brainer.
Okay, so that being said, I, I believe we have consensus. Okay, so that being said, I believe we have consensus. So Heidi, among the many things that we're working on. It's, I mean, I, I think that. In some cities, you know, it's a paid position, you know, where people have, you know. Been terminated from, right? I don't think that's what we're looking at. I think it's more of a symbolic title. And just somebody that everybody knows they can go to for something like this. So. I'll, I'll leave it to you to, to find out the best way for us to do something like that and recognize this very special person of our community. Okay, so we move on to 11B, request by staff to discuss partial closure of the circle for a special event on June 1st. The celebratory parade for the Miami Springs Senior High Baseball Team State Championship win. Mr. City Manager, would you like to?
Yes, well, as you can imagine, the conversations that we've had. After the state, the team won the state championship, there's been a lot of discussion. I've been getting inundated with calls from residents all over. What are we doing? What are we doing? Immediately. The school board, the school board member, Danny Espino, the principal, they said they wanted to do something. This is their school, their event, I mean, it's our school, but. It's, you know, under their jurisdiction, their event, we're here to facilitate, you know, the best as possible. What we can do to celebrate their momentous victory and their championship. So kind of morphed, and I know Mayor, you were in those conversations. It. The parade was always.
Part of it.
The date just kind of shifted around. So it looks like the date will now be next Sunday at 10 a.m. And, and it was talked about starting at the, at the community center. And head down towards the circle and have a celebration there at the circle. For a couple hours.
Yeah.
And that's the plan so far.
Okay.
So. What I wanted here is since there's going to be, they wanted, they were requesting a partial circle closure, that needs to come to the council. So I wanted to make sure it was. Properly approved.
Sure, sure. So I can give some more details. So the county, our county commissioner, Natalie Millian Orbis. Got us the showmobile stage from the county. It's going to be set up on the circle. We're going to do a one lane closure, so a partial closure like we do for the barbecue showdown. And then the band and cheerleaders and parents and everybody are going to be on the circle. At 10 o'clock because there's going to be a ceremony, there's going to be a DJ. But the players themselves, there will be a parade that starts, that will be just the players on a bus. On a, I believe double decker bus, and then we got a fire truck. And they're going to be staged over by the community center, the rec center, and then they will go down westward. And I'm, I've been told that the golf cart community will be out along the road, along the parade route, and then we'll join in after, you know, as they pass them. But with the parade will proceed down Westwood Drive till they get to the ceremony, which is at the circle. And then when they get to the circle, you know, they'll stop traffic for a minute for them to get off and we'll celebrate them. And we're going to have a Miami Heat style. Championship ceremony there on the circle. So it should be a lot of fun and they, they deserve the recognition. So we're inviting everybody in the community to come out and support. If not along the parade route. Bring your lawn chairs and come out to the circle for the ceremony to recognize these young men.
And Mayor, I'm sorry. The, it's a good point. People have been asking, oh, can we participate in the parade? They've been calling, it's like if it's the 4th of July parade, they've been calling the parks and rec. It's, you know, we're leaving it in their hands, who they want in the parade. And I think that was a compromise that we made is like after they pass by, then we can follow on with their, with the golf carts and participate that way. The actual parade itself is dedicated just to the, to the members of the school.
Yeah.
Junior and band members are going to probably be.
They'll, they'll be at the circle waiting, and they'll be playing music. And again, there's going to be a DJ. It's going to be a very good time. And we did reach out, the, the date did change. Last minute, and so I'm not sure if the Marlins cheerleaders were going to, I think they were going to send some cheerleaders. We will see. But we're definitely going to have the parade and the ceremony. It's going to be a great time. So.
I have a question? Oh, you have a question, Councilman?
Yes, to the chair, just in reference to, I want some clarification for the public and for the business owners. It's going to be one lane. Maybe the chief could come up and explain. To make sure that, of course, one of our favorite local businesses like Max Mylins, Mylins supermarkets, and their entrances to their businesses. Just one lane. Come on, if you don't mind, Chief, thank you.
The microphone doesn't reach back there.
No worries. So yeah, it's going to be a one lane closure, just the inner perimeter of the lane. Every business is going to be up for operation. We did it for the same way for the barbecue event. And off floor traffic is going to be normal operations.
Yeah. Perfect.
And we're still working out the details, but that's, that's as of today, that's the, that's the route we're going to go.
Great, thank you.
City manager, J.C., who, so it's not really our event, but who is promoting this? Who is spreading the word? Does that fall upon the school to do that? The school board?
The school, the school board prepared the flyer, the official flyer and the information. All we're doing is sharing it on social media, which we already did. And I'll make sure that this week we continue promoting it, but all communication, all information is coming from them. We're not generating anything. They want to send out the message. It's their message.
And we can just spread it. I mean, just share it. Okay.
Mayor. Just to have some clarification, we're still not clear if people could bring their golf carts and follow.
They, no, they can, they can do that. That's pretty clear.
And then the businesses in the circle, is there any way they're already to made, been made aware and they could be involved as well?
Um, we've advertised it already on social media. We. See if we can, I'll see if, how we can further. Communicate with them, maybe send some flyers, send some notifications out. We'll do our best to communicate with them.
If I can help in any way, let me know. I'd be the help.
I mean, Sunday is pretty quiet.
Do we have like a, do we have one of those portable like street closure signs where you could put the sign that says like closed, you know, like.
Not we can get one.
That says, you know.
You know, those messages.
Partial closing of the circle on Sunday morning for.
Yeah, let's get, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get one up.
Thank you for doing this.
Okay, all right. So then. So do, what kind of approval do you need from the council for the partial closing? Just consensus? Okay, do we have consensus to approve the partial closure?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so that takes care of new business. Move on to reports and recommendations from our esteemed city attorney.
None this evening.
All right. Reports and recommendations from our city manager.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to give the, in the consent agenda, I wanted to give an update. There was. Some discussion there about the East and Oakwood Drive project. And just so that the residents know, one thing that, not that word, it's kind of. Added some time to the project, and the reason being is that we have convinced the county or worked with the county so that they replace. A asbestos concrete water main between Reagan and Kenmore. It's been giving us problems ever since we started this project, several leaks. Installation of several valves over there by the county. And the fact that it's also an asbestos concrete pipe. So they're replacing that pipe. And this has kind of delayed the project a bit, but within, they, they started today with the pipe. It should be done within two to three weeks. Two weeks, and then our project will be completed within 60 days. And that, I got it from Public Works just a short while ago. So I wanted to give the, the residents that information if they're seeing some additional work happening, that's what's going on. In addition to that. But our Parks and Recreation, we're starting a pilot program and I was talking about with Omar today. It's called Acing Autism, and it's at the tennis center. It's, Acing Autism is a volunteer run, non-for-profit. Corporation company in which they teach autistic children tennis. They provide them tennis lessons. So it's a, it's a program that we are. It's like a pilot program. We're just trying it out, trying it out this summer. I think it starts August. And it goes through October, beginning of October. And we're pretty excited about it. So check out Acing Autism. They have a nice website and they talk about what they're providing, and it's, it's pretty exciting. So it's, if it works out, I would look into entering into a long-term relationship with them, longer term. This is not like Valiente type of tennis camp. This is purely for auti, you know, autism. It's once a week on Saturdays. Between like nine and 10 or nine and 11, something like that. And it's only on two courts. So.
Nice.
Right? So I thought that was interesting, and I'll turn it over to Tammy for any updates. And Mayor, I do have one more thing. Starting tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'll be at a. The Florida City and County Managers Association Conference, and just for the new council members that are here. I am required to have 40 hours of continuing education credits every year. And in the two conferences that I go to a year, I get like 90% of my hours. So this one is in Orlando. I will be there. I have my phone on me. I will have my computer with me. You need me, just call me. It's, it's, it's all good. And plus Tammy will be here and city will keep moving forward.
For sure. Okay, all right. So city clerk? Nothing? All right, let's go with city council. We'll start seat one. Councilman Santin.
Thank you. Questions to our Public Works, if you don't mind, update. A lot of the residents have asked me in some of the streets that we have. You know, some of the stop signs and some of the eel signs, all the signs that are kind of hard to see, especially at night. I know you and me have talked about it before. I referenced getting reflectors to add to them. Said that they've, they've come back, they were, they were in back order, but we got them now. So when can the residents, you think, are going to be able to start seeing some of those on, yeah?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Councilman. The. Reflectors arrived. They require installation to the stop signs. I believe within the next two weeks, we should start putting them up. We only have the red. The yellow have not arrived.
Okay.
So we'll be doing mostly the stop signs throughout the city. At the same time, straighten them out again and propping them up.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Lastly here for my usual request for the public to get involved in our community stuff, especially our centennial. Don't be a Monday morning quarterback when this thing is all done and over. Get involved. You've got talent, you've got money. Come and get involved. Like I said, we'll hear it later that we could have done better. A lot of people working behind the scenes on this. And it's going to take a whole village, or in this case, our community town, to get involved so it can be successful. So please get involved and look up for all the events that we're going to be having recently posted. And one in particular, June 21st, Alliance Club will be hosting the Centennial Jazz Festival. Same thing, kind of highlight what we're doing for the centennial and also a little fundraiser for it. Thank you.
So thank you for, J.C., for bringing up the, the situation on Oakwood. We spoke earlier. I tried to reach out to the resident that was going through the issue in that area earlier today. Just to kind of get her feedback because she's there. She hasn't gotten back to me. I think I could see from what you have here. That this is a path to getting this done. So that's why from me, didn't get any pushback and. I look forward to hopefully getting it done soon. Also, I wanted to ask, because I had someone ask me about this, and I think we have a great. Golf course. It's in an amazing place, right in the middle of the city. We just lost the golf course not too far away. So we have. A lot of golfers that are pretty much looking for a place. Is there a way to get a sign like. Off of the Palmetto or somewhere about Palmetto, say, you know, just letting people know that there's a golf course. In Miami Springs.
A sign like that would require, and, and I think I know kind of sign that you're talking about is a directional sign like, right? Like when you're on the Palmetto, letting people know to come off.
Don't go to Doral. Do a big turn to the left instead of turn to right. Yeah.
I'm sure there's.
With the dollar signs.
I'm sure there's someone up there that's asking for that very sign, pointing to Doral.
But that one. That requires coordination with the state because of the Palmetto. So it's, and then 36th Street, well, yeah, 36th Street, I'm assuming is the exit you were talking about.
Yeah, maybe.
From 36th Street to get up there, that would still require DOT because I believe 36th is that DOT roadway. So the answer is. It's, it couldn't.
It can be done.
But it would require. A few phone calls. Let me make a few phone calls.
J.C., do you want to update us on, on how the golf course has been doing since, you know, it's probably been. It's been a while now since it got back open, but what's the trajectory? How have they been doing?
They've been doing great, honestly, exceeding projections every single month.
It seems like they're busy.
They're, they're busy. They are busy and, and he, one of the things that I really, really liked that Kevin brought in is the golf academy. And it's not just for kids, but they, they also have for, for adult lessons. They even, they have a program called Tips and Sips, which.
They're, they're tipping them back right now, probably at hole 19.
It's like, it's for, for, for the, it's like for the ladies to learn how to play. And that's been quite a success. I, I heard somebody's wife has been.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't know we were doing that well these days. We're taking on golf.
They've, they've turned it into, let me see how I can, how I can phrase it. We're taking advantage more now of the asset that we have and making it more accessible to the community than I believe it was before. Before it was purely just come play around a golf and you go in and out. Now we're trying to. Make it a, a department. Instead of just, oh, there's a golf course.
Yeah.
I want, I want them, and, and Kevin's even talking about partnering with Omar next year.
Right.
It's not going to be for this summer, but next year to, to provide a specialty camp, maybe a sports camp. Sorts where they can do some tennis, they can do some golf. And so, so there's a lot of things that are being talked about, but. They're, the best way I can, but they're, they now feel like a department.
Yeah.
Working with the others to, for the common goal of providing excellent services to the resident, and he's doing a great job.
Yeah, the trajectory is up for sure, it seems. So if it does take a long time to get a sign, you know, the state to move on a sign, I think, I think that we're, we're doing well. That was my understanding for sure.
Chair?
Sure.
Sorry, just to follow up on what you were saying about the signs, just so you can tell the residents, our Commissioner Orbis. Supported and sponsored two landmark markers. The Preservation Board is writing them up. They'll go to the state. It takes about six months. Once we get that one for the golf course, Curtis Mansion, and as well as the Clune Building. At that moment, the state will also issue the ones you've seen in Coral Gables where it says, you know, Merrick House, and then it points towards the area. So at that point, we'll discuss how to put it on 36th Street. But we'll have one for the golf course and Curtis Mansion, let people know where we're at.
Yep.
Thank you, George. And just to wrap it up, great job in Memorial Day yesterday. That was an awesome event. It's great to see the war memorial being used in such a great way to remember our heroes, our true heroes. And just, I would like to tell everybody to try to come out on Sunday. Let's, let's support our youth. They did a great job. They're our heroes right now, speaking of heroes. You know, and just come out on Sunday. Thank you.
Councilman?
Yeah, Memorial Day. It was, it was a new configuration for everyone, but I think it went off very smoothly. And it was a very nice event to attend. I spoke to the scouts afterwards. They would like to do, and they'll talk to, they'll approach you, J.C., they would like to do for Flag Day, which is Saturday, June 14th. A nighttime flag retirement ceremony. And we've talked about it over the years because I think at night, it is something to see. And it's a very solemn ceremony. So if they're meeting tonight, I can't be there. But I will approach them and then I guess they'll approach, they'll talk to you, they'll work it out through you. So we could have maybe as cars, cars will stop to see. So maybe we have police kind of guiding people to park on the side. They can get off and see the ceremony and then they can, they can move on from there. So it'll be hopefully June 14th, Saturday night. And the Centennial Committee, to, to Councilman Santin's point, love the way the Centennial Committee is progressing forward, right? We sit there in the audience, we see it. And I do encourage all the residents to attend, be there, see what's going on, get involved. And tomorrow night's the next meeting. Right? So I'll be there too. Alright, so I'll be there too. And, um, and just remember to recycle. Reduce, reduce, reuse, recycle. Just wanted to add that in there. That's it.
I did, just one, one last thing, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it. Um, one of the Eagle Scouts that, um, that came to us with one of the projects, the one on the bench, the benches on, on Westwood, well, he was approved and he will now be getting his Eagle Scout courage. I guess they're called Eagle Scout.
Well, he'd be awarded the Eagle Scout rank.
The Eagle Scout rank, um, come, what, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
So, he was already approved by the board. Now, it's just, uh, the actual ceremony on Tuesday. So, I do wanna congratulate Maximo San Martin for.
Yep.
A very small percentage actually make it to Eagle.
Congrats, Max.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, I promised our school board member, Mr. Danny Espino, that I would say that, uh, he regrets not being here to celebrate the, the baseball team because he had a prior engagement. I was supposed to say that while the baseball team was here, but instead I'm saying it now. Um, so, better late than never. Um, I do, uh, Chief, the speed, uh, speed cameras go live when? May 30th, May 30th, the speed cameras in the school zones go live. Do not go 11 miles over the speed limit, please, and you will not receive a ticket. Alright, so, with that, we, uh, close this meeting at 7:51. This meeting is adjourned.
It'll get, it'll get, it'll get longer.
We need to get there.
We need the staff to do more work.
Put more stuff on the agenda for us.